Okay, let's move into our program then. As our moderator, is this on, it's like it's still going, okay. As the moderator for today's program, we are pleased to have one of Cupertino's finest citizens. He has a distinguished law practice in Cupertino. He served two terms on city council from 1972 to 1980. And you may remember there was some very imaginative legislation that came out of that period of time too, that was set new standards for the city, something like the Pet Rock leash law, as I recall, came out of that era. The no more rain on our city legislation, it was really just milestone kinds of stuff. He also served as mayor for two terms. He was honored in 1982 as the Cupertino Chambers Citizen of the Year. Been a resident for 35 years of Cupertino, but his most important and distinguishing characteristic demonstrating his good taste and judgment is that he's the husband of our own Pat Jackson. So that, so with that, may I introduce our moderator for today's session and forum, Mr. Jim Jackson. Jim?
Okay. Thank you very much Darrell. I think actually what Darrell is talking about is I have become the poster boy for what not to do on the city council. So for all you candidates, this isn't a good illustration of what not to do, but what Darrell is talking about is that we don't always have to take our government quite as seriously as sometimes people in Washington do, and it's kind of fun. I would like to first of all, call up the candidates here and like to have each of you give them all a good hand as they come up, and I'd like to give them my own personal compliments for putting themselves out to run for office. As far as I'm concerned, this is the heart of our democracy, and were it not for people such as these candidates, we would not have a democracy as we know it. So we owe them a good debt of gratitude. Let me give them, and I'm going to introduce them as they come forward, this is by alphabetical only. First of all, Don Burnett incumbent. Don, let's give you a big hand and step forward. The seats are all arranged for you, and no one knows which one has electrical buzzer on it, so you'll just have to take your chances on that. Next is Andrea Harris, the tax appraisal supervisor. Andrea? Steve Hayes, business executive. Sandy James, governing board member, Cupertino School District. And John Stanton, Chamber Executive Director. John? Okay, why don't you have a seat. Now after having all of us giving you our compliments and our thanks and our applause, we will now proceed to beat you up as you go along through the campaign trail. You'll be getting questions during the campaign trail like, you know, for example, have you or have you not stopped taking graft? Or have you always been an idiot, or did it just start during this campaign? Well, as you get questions like that, you realize that is in the great American tradition of beating up our candidates that we so dearly need. So keep that in mind, and I hope you don't ever have to experience what I experienced one time on my first campaign when I was, gave a spirited presentation of my platform and my qualification, what I was going to do for Cupertino. And then when I finished, I asked the audience to say, is anybody have any questions? And the guy in the back said, yes, who else is running? So, okay. Every forum has to have some rules, and I'm going to give to you the rules. I think most of the candidates know the rules, but for the audience, these are the rules. We will start with an opening statement by each candidate, which is two minutes in length. I have asked Don, the enforcer Allen, to be our timekeeper. He is standing in front of you, and he has two cards. One will be, say 30, and that means you have 30 seconds left. And the other one says time, and that means you are out of time. Okay. Anyone who goes over the time the first time gets a gentle reminder. The next time, there's a trap door that opens up, and you go pushing down through a tube, and you end up on the Arcediocese property in between some ardent advocates on both sides. So try to avoid any going over the time. After your two-minute opening statement, then I will give one question, and that question will be directed to each of you, and you'll get one minute to answer that one. Then I'll give you a second question, and you each get one minute to answer that. And from then on, I'm going to take written questions from the floor. So those of you who have the written questions in front of you, please go ahead and give your questions, and they will be brought up to me, and I'll start going through them. We'll go as far as we can go, probably about three questions, maybe more. And then we'll have one minute closing. Basically, that's the rule. No applause, please, and not even a scattered boo. I want to make sure that all the boos are kept places other than here. So anyway, one last reminder, this is to follow what Donna Brown has said. As you know, this is being videotaped. The videotapes will be immediately lost and will not be discovered until there is an investigation by the Attorney General. But at that time, you and whatever you say about raising campaign funds will be found on those videotapes before Congress. So be very, very careful about how you try to raise funds during your campaign statement. Okay, I think those are all the rules. If there's no questions for the candidates, then let's go ahead and get started. I'm going to start it left to right, and then right to left, and then inside out and outside in. So nobody, nobody knows whether they're going to be first or last. So we're going to start with the opening statements. We'll start those from the Burnett side down here, and then we'll go from there. So Don, would you like to start with your opening statement?
Thank you, Jim. After all the seminars and forums, you have a one-minute, two-minute opening statement, so I'll have my two-minute opening statement. Basically, what I've tried to do on the council is try and make decisions that will optimize the quality of life for everybody in the city. It's not as easy as I thought it would be before I was elected. We often arrive with a chamber full of very angry people who want something that isn't necessarily good for all of the city, and it really isn't any fun to tell them that they can't have it. But it's worth the price, as far as I'm concerned. I feel we've had a very good four years that I've been in office. We've managed to plant the trees along Stevens Creek, finally, to get that done. We've got a good start on a solution for the Diocese's property. A couple of weeks ago, we finally modified the general plan. We removed over 2 million square feet of growth that I'm convinced would have been real bad for the city. And I think finally, everybody was convinced of that after the four years because it passed unanimously both in the Planning Commission and the city council. Looking forward to the future, I think we have some really interesting projects that are going to benefit all of the community coming forth. We'll be expanding the senior center. We'll be looking to increase library services, and hopefully some combination of increased hours and increased facilities. And I'm looking forward to the opportunity to try and work for the city for another four years. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Don. All right, next will be Andrea Harris. Andrea?
I don't need to tell a roomful of community activists why I'm running for office. It's a call. It's the same reason that you all serve. I feel like I need to serve. I've been on the Planning Commission for four years, and I learned a great deal about land use there, and was recently appointed for another four years. However, the issues in Cupertino today are land use oriented. All the complaints that we get have to do with buildings being too high, too wide, too close to the street, creating too much traffic, that sort of thing. So I have the background to deal with those issues. As a 25-year real estate appraiser of commercial, industrial, and income property, I also know what happens to property value when you change land use, and we need to balance that, the property owner rights and the residents' interests. And so I think I would be a good person for that. The first man I met when I came in today said, well, I'm not voting in this election. I just came for lunch. So I was demoralizing. But I think each of you are here because you are interested in this event, because you can go back to your company if you're not voting and share your insight on the candidates and on the issues. And every single company and every single person in town has a place, and it's wonderful that you all come forward. My issues have to do with the residents' view on the housing issues. I'd like to see some single-family homes instead of apartments. And I think our major task is to rejuvenate our business community. Many of our major retailers are leaving town, and VAALCO is having a real problem, and we need to invest some of the city's resources in getting some consultants in here to help us fix that.
Thank you very much, Andrea. Steve?
Thank you, Jim. First of all, I'd like to thank the Rotary for having us here today. Secondly, I would like to challenge that individual who said they don't intend to vote after they hear from all the candidates that they either want to vote on behalf of the candidate, or they'll go to the polls to be certain that one of us is not elected. I think...
They didn't look here.
New information. Well, that's a lesson in itself. A lot of you know me. You may see in The Courier, the guy who rides into the sunset on a horse that's fully exhausted, but you may not know what I do from 8:00 to 5:00. I work for Wang. Wang, a global information technologies corporation, a company that is out there every day trying to make a difference. And I've been working in high technology for 25 years, and I feel most proud of the services that I've been able to give to our community over these last 15 years. There are three things that I look at, at a high level. One is responsible and balanced growth. The other is celebration of community, and the third is leadership by involvement. I hope today, when it's all said and done, that I told you who I am, what I have done, what I would like to do with you. I'm a friend, I'm a neighbor, I'm a neighborhood activist. I have been told I am a community leader. And again, I, when asked the question, why would I run? It's very simple, because I care. I care about my friends, I care about neighbors, and I most of all care about one special interest, and that is our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Steve. Sandy?
Well, those of you that know me know that I can't say anything in two minutes, so this is a real challenge for me. But you also know that I've worked for you for the last eight years, because you elected me in 1989 and again in 1993 to represent you on the Cupertino Union School District Board of Education. What many of you may not know is that education is the leader employer in the city of Cupertino, and many of us don't think of it that way. But when you add Deanser College in the High School District and the Elementary School District, we not only impact the quality of your life and the value of your homes, but also we are the employers that bring many people into this community. Someone asked me recently how I feel about the last eight years, and it took me one second to answer that question. I feel absolutely wonderful about the last eight years. I feel I've done a very good job, I'm very proud of the job that I've done for you. Why would I run for city council? Because many of you have urged me to do that, because I have lived in this community since I was a teenager, and I am concerned about some of the things I see happening, mainly the division that's going on in our community, the we-they kind of mentality, have to be pro-business or anti-business, pro-environment or anti-environment. People are dividing into little tiny clusters, and I think that is not the kind of community any of us want. I believe my experience on the school board and in my own private industry building partnerships, working with our legislators, working across regional lines with six different municipalities as we have schools in six different cities, enables me to bring the skills to serve on a council, to bring people together, to speak for us along all of those different areas to help us find out who we are as a city and what we want to do. I agree, it's not about buildable land. We're 85% build-out. It's about the quality of life, and it's about getting us to where we want to go as a unit and as a community.
Thank you very much, Sandy. And last, John Stanton.
Thank you, Jim. Essentially, I'm going to be able to bring, I think, a decade's worth of experience to the city council position, experience in city affairs, experience in community activism, experience in working with a lot of people in the room today and others across our community, and helping to make this a better town. There are essentially five things that I'd like to do. The first is control growth and traffic in our town. Cupertino is essentially built out. How we grow from this point forward is going to be very, very important to us as a community. I'm concerned about 1.2 million square feet of new housing growth that's been approved in the last four years, and I think that's in turn beginning to crowd our schools and begin to crowd our streets with excess traffic, and it's something we need to keep an eye on very closely. I'm also concerned with building strong neighborhoods. Basically, what I view a community as is a community of people that are friends and acquaintances, not strangers. And anything the city can do, and it's an important role for a city to play, to bring us together as friends and acquaintances, this is very important for us to do. One of the ways I'd like to see that happen is through expanding our disaster preparedness programs, things like the Fourth of July, which I played a role in several years ago in bringing back to the community. And it's those things that get us working together that are important. Open space and environmental stewardship is something also that I think is very key for us. I was part of the team that helped bring back Blackberry Farm and keep it as a community park rather than a subdivision. I'd like to see our hillsides preserved, and again, traffic is something that concerns me very much. Also, economic development in our community is important. We have a mall that's essentially on the ropes, and if any of you have looked around, you realize that how we have a healthy business community is why we in turn don't have to pay higher taxes and fees. And so I'd like to make sure that we do have a very strong and healthy business environment. And finally, improving our library and senior centers is a critical issue with me as well. We're on the way of building a $31 million surplus in a town where our general fund is only $22 million, and I'd like to see some of those funds used for those kinds of activities, in turn providing for our youth and for our seniors. I hope for your support this fall, and I appreciate the chance to talk today.
Thank you very much. John? Okay, that was fantastic. That trap door threat really worked because not one of them went over there in two minutes. And that was amazing. I don't think I've ever been to a forum where that's happened. Okay, so now that you can do it in two minutes, we'll see if you can do it in one minute. This is really the era of the soundbite, so this gives you a one-minute soundbite on some rather significant questions. The first question we have, in this case, I'm going to start and go reverse, start with John this time and go back in the other direction. First question is, what do you think is the number-one problem facing the city of Cupertino, and what specific things would you do to go about solving it?
I'd have to look at the economic development issues, one of the top issues. I hear two or three number-one problems, and they were the ones I outlined a little while ago. But essentially, we've got, as I pointed out, VAALCO is really on the ropes, and I think that we need to be able to find a way to get Federated out of the old Emporium site, get Dillard's into that site, get the mall re-tenantated with quality tenants, and in turn begin to get healthy sales tax flowing from that so that in turn we're not paying higher taxes and fees. If we can do that with VAALCO, we can do it with our other shopping centers up and down Stevens Creek Boulevard in Deanser. We have aging centers, and it's time that we really sit down and look at how we in turn improve the shopping locally so that people aren't having to go to Valley Fair and Stanford. We have a great economic base in this community, we have some of the best educated people in the world, and some of the highest income per household, and it's time that we really have shopping that can match that kind of demographic.
Okay, thank you. Sandy?
I agree with John, and so I'm going to address a different issue, which I think is equally as important and I hear very often, and that's people concerned about the quality of their neighborhoods. When a house is taken down that next door to them, all of a sudden there are six houses or one very large house that takes up all the space on that land, and that's very distressing to people in the community, and I believe we need to look at that immediately. I think of looking down Stevens Creek and seeing that affordable housing unit that's there right on near Lawrence Expressway, sitting practically on the street, or those houses on Peninsula that are on the railroad tracks almost, and I can't imagine how that got passed through, and we're looking at those kinds of developments in our city. People have lived here a long time, they came here for reasons that they feel strongly about, and I do believe as a city council, we have to protect the rights of the homeowners, but equally protect the interests and rights of the people that already live in that community. It's the time for us to look at the setbacks, it's time for us to look at the floor ratio areas, and that's something that I feel strongly about.
Okay, and Steve?
Well, I can think of a lot of issues that the city has grappled with as it relates to growth, as it relates to overcrowded schools and traffic and so forth, but I think the most important thing is really is to try to look at ourselves as a community. We have had over the last 10 to 15 years a very significant change in the demographics, and I grew up at a time when there was the civil rights movement, and our country almost fell apart. My feeling is that we need to look at the richness and diversity as richness and opportunity. As a business executive, I have a lot of business associates who are recent immigrants, and that's my universe. But we have the schools where we need to do this, and we need to do it in government as well.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Andrea?
I think we need to become more friendly to business in this community. We have had in the past some very restrictive rules about parking and hours, and I think that we're making some changes along those lines. We changed the required parking and made it more generous to business, and I think we need to look at expanding hours and expanding the use types that we allow in our centers. Most of you have lived in this valley a long time, and you saw Valley Fair decline, and you saw Westgate decline, and you saw El Paso decline, and now you see them as major thriving centers where everyone from Cupertino is going to spend their sales tax dollars. I believe that those people would just as soon spend their sales tax dollars here in town. And we have to figure out how to bring them here, and we have to renew VAALCO, even if it takes a major reconstruction of it, and that might mean some city money. But we have a huge reserve, and we can hire consultants, and it's been done elsewhere. So that's what I want to see done here.
Okay, thank you. And Don?
Yes, I share all of the concerns that you've heard expressed so far. However, my number-one concern is really for the traffic on our streets and the risk that that poses. I'm particularly concerned with traffic within neighborhoods, which is becoming more and more of a problem, particularly around the schools, parents driving their children to school. I think there are things we can do both to encourage more children to come to school as the children themselves would like to on bicycles, rollerblades, or feet, rather than being driven. I think there's a problem of teaching the children to use the roads and also to make the roads around the schools safer. There are techniques to do this, and I think we need to study them and look at them. All neighborhood traffic needs to be looked at carefully. I hear a lot of concern about speeding down residential streets, and I think we need to look a little bit beyond speed bumps for doing this. There are other techniques that can do it that are safer and more attractive than speed bumps. With respect to our main arterials, running red lights, I think, is the biggest problem.
Okay, Don, very good. Okay, that's all for the first question. Again, they did an excellent job keeping it within the one minute. They had scary Don out there, looking very menacing there, so it's keeping them in line. Next question, this time, I'm going to start on the inside and move out, so I'm going to have Steve go first, and then Andrea and Don, and then Sandy and John. So second question is, do you support any specific changes in the present general plan, and if so, what?
Well, the most significant change I was looking at, when I ran the last time, I said I wanted to review the tier program, okay? Because of the imbalance that was being created by the 2 million square feet of additional growth, which was unmitigated, almost 100%. Interesting enough, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to forward that to the city council in tandem, who was originally opposed to it, and the Mercury News, who said it was bad for business, supported it. So I think we're moving in the right direction, that we're reducing the amount of industrial growth, we're allowing for more housing to be placed closer to major employment centers, and tandem is leading the way.
Okay, very good. Andrea?
Our current general plan requires most of the housing on most of the land that's left to be built at 20 units to the acre. That's very dense. Last year, we had a real housing imbalance here. We were way short of our jobs housing requirement. We approved a really good plan for 2,500 units. We designated 3,500 sites to get the 2,500 units, and in the first year and a half of the plan, we actually approved about 1,250. That's good. Way more than expected. But about 1,000 of those are apartments, and 800 are yet to be built. We already have a problem with traffic, the schools can't guarantee home-school advantage, and our general plan calls for more 20-unit to the acre. I'd like to bring that down and have more traditional subdivisions built on that land and small homes for people in the maybe $400,000 to $600,000 range.
Okay, thank you, Andrea. And Don?
My concern is also about the housing element of the general plan. It was put in place based on projections made by ABAAG in 1989. Conditions have changed drastically since then. Obviously, to me, another 1,500 units of housing has caused grievous damage to the city that is still in our general plan. I think we need to open it up. Andrea has suggested some ways to deal with parts of the problem. A further aspect of it is also the part of our general plan that deals with setbacks and floor area ratios. I think we need to look at that, particularly the floor area ratio aspect that determines basically how big things get. I think we need to do floor area ratios based on net lot size rather than gross lot size. Sounds technical, but it makes a big difference in how big the buildings are. So those are the main issues that I see that need to be dealt with in the general plan.
Okay, thank you, Don. And Sandy?
I think that the whole general plan needs to be reviewed, and the review process really doesn't include enough citizen input. I think this whole community has changed drastically over the last few years, and our general plan does not reflect the change. There definitely are a lot of concerns about floor area ratios, setbacks, housing. We've built lots and lots of housing and apartments, and we don't have the services to support that. We haven't supported our business industry in every way that we possibly can, and so our tax base is not big enough to provide the infrastructure that we need for the people living in the houses, as well as it's impacting schools, and we already know the schools are full, and the High School District is facing an upcoming bond election. So I believe that the whole review process needs to be updated, and I think the general plan itself needs to be addressing all of these various issues.
And John?
The general plan is always a dangerous question because instantly, half the audience's eyes glaze over, and this is also tough right after lunch when the snooze factor sets in as well. But let me just take two shots at it real quick. One of them is the whole housing issue that I mentioned in my opening statement. We've approved a heck of a lot of housing in town, it's time we really put the brakes on that. We have to also look at what in terms of sizes, houses were beginning to put on lots. This is beginning a balancing issue between what a property owner's rights are and also what a neighborhood's rights are. And from the neighborhood coffees that I've been attending and walking door to door, I'm getting the feeling from a lot of neighbors that they're objecting to these very large houses that aren't quite fitting in their lots. And the other thing that I'm kind of concerned about is what's going to happen with increased parkland in town. And I'd like to see us use existing places like the railroad, which is already a well-used strip for people going up and down, to actually look at that as an increased possible future park zone for us and along the line of Lewis-Cottles Creek Trail. So when we're looking at this, I'd say again, housing, recreation, and those are two of the areas in the general plan I'd look at.
Okay, very good. First question now from the audience, and this time we're going to start with Andrea and come down this way and get Don the last shot. Okay, first question of the audience, do you think realtors should be exempt from the sign ordinance? Pat, I told you I was not going to ask that question. Okay. The first legitimate question from the audience I'm going to ask is, okay. If you are elected to the city council, what can you bring to the council that none of the other candidates can bring? Andrea?
I think the first thing I'll do is get rid of the portion that takes the realtors and not let them put their signs. The benefit of me is that I'm a moderate. I'm supported by liberals and conservatives, Republicans and Democrats, and that's because I'm a balanced candidate. And my background as a real estate appraiser and on the Planning Commission is what makes me different from other people. Everyone cares about property value in your home and in your business, and I think that that's what I bring to the council.
Okay, and Steve?
Well, first of all, I've been here for 19 years, 15 years as a community activist, dealt with the hard issues. 1980 general plan review, served on the Citizens Goals Committee for the 1990 general plan review, looked at the Montevista Master Plan, proposed the design charrette for citizen involvement for the Stevens Creek Boulevard Master Plan. Now we have VAALCO to look at. I serve currently on five boards. I chair two, I'm vice chair of a third. I have served on 18 organizations or initiatives. Over those 15 years, I feel that I can bring each of those individual interests together to serve the common interest of our community.
Thank you, Steve. And Sandy?
I think one of the things that makes me unique that I bring with me is that my private business is human resource consulting, and in public, we have also hired two superintendents and key staff on the school district. Within the next three or four years, all of the key management staff in the city will be nearing or at retirement age. Many of you may not know that, but that is a very important point. I bring both professional, private, and public experience with doing searches... and public experience with doing searches as a group, as well as an individual, both very different processes, by the way, and coming to conclusion to hire very, very successful key people, most of whom you have met in this community. So I think that that is going to be one of the most critical jobs that the new council has to face in the next few years.
Okay, and John?
Well, I think one of the things I'll bring to the table is a really wide breadth of experience. As I mentioned, I've sat through literally hundreds of city council and planning commission meetings, and managed to do so without falling asleep, which I think is in a record in and of itself. I've had a good, solid history of working for our community. I was part of the team to help bring back the fireworks a couple of years ago, and I think that's been a very successful community activity, and a very important one for us. I also helped retain Blackberry Farm as a community park, rather than letting it go to a subdivision. And one of the other things I'd like to point out is I was fortunate enough to pick up the Mercury News's endorsement yesterday, among the three candidates, and they mentioned in there that, one, I was smart, and, two, that I was a good listener. And so I hope I bring that to the table as well.
If you're so smart, how come you're a candidate? Okay, and last on that one, Don Burnett?
Well, I guess my four-year record is either an asset or a liability, depending on your point of view. I think I have done what I said I was going to do when I ran for the office. I think we've had four years that have been very good for the city. I think the council has a good relationship with our very talented and dedicated staff, who've done a wonderful job, I think, of bringing the city forward in the past four years. I think one asset that I have that's somewhat unique is I do have a technical background, and I think that's often useful in some of the complex issues that come before us. I think that pretty much sums up what it is. I have my literature back there. If you want to find out what happened in the last four years, I don't have time to tell it all.
All right, thank you very much, Don. We'll go to another question, and this time, we're going to start with Sandy, and go the other direction with leaving John last. Okay, "The council and candidates in no way reflect the ethnic and cultural makeup of the city. How do you plan to service the needs of all the Cupertino residents?" Sandy?
Well, actually, you're right. We do not reflect the cultural diversity of the city. That is something I've dealt with as a school board member for eight years, and if you take a look at our schools, you will see that we have done an outstanding job, and we definitely, in the schools, do reflect the cultural diversity of our city. It is not an easy thing to deal with, and a number of the issues you will look at is staff, hiring staff, trying to find qualified staff that mirror your community. Also, on any appointments or commissions that the council appoints, that can be an issue that they can look to. Clearly, you want to make sure people are very qualified, and if they are qualified, then you want to make an extreme effort to make sure that they do represent the community overall. Our community is incredibly diverse. We have huge East Indian, Russian, Israelis, certainly we know Asian, and I also have, you know, I think that our limited physically able community is underrepresented everywhere, as well as our teen community, and those are two issues that I feel intensely passionate about.
Okay, thank you very much. And Steve?
Well, I somewhat disagree with that statement. Maybe demographically, we're all from families of immigrants. Myself, German, Irish, Cherokee, Indian, and Assyrian. The church that I go to here has Holy Light congregation made up of recent immigrants. I have gone to South Africa and participated in a peace conference, definitely dealt with issues that are much greater in significance than we'll hopefully ever experience. I have also participated in preservation of Hispanic culture here, and participated in hands across the border in Mexico. One of good friends ran for governor of state of Sonora. He was just like you and I. I feel that indeed, that I do have that experience, and it's day in and day out with my business associates, as well as with my church. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Andrea?
I'm part of a public dialogue here that's been started by the city. Some outside group was brought in to try and bring the city together around the diversity issue. When you go to those meetings, the community is wonderfully represented there, and much is coming out of that. Communication issues, we're talking about having annual community events, maybe having a mentoring program across race lines. I would like to see the commissions more balanced, and I'd like to see the different voices reflected there. Also, the chamber has a leadership training program now called Leadership Cupertino, and I would hope that people can be recruited to attend that, to become future leaders.
Okay, Don?
Yes, I'd like to build a little on what Andrea said. Public dialogue consortium, I think, has been very valuable in involving the broader community, the ethnic community of different kinds. I'd like to give particular appreciation to Don Brown, our city manager, who played a key role in bringing that to the council, and the council leapt at the opportunity to work with these folks, and I think they've done a lot to bring the community together. With regard to commissions and candidates, I think we're moving very strongly in that direction. We now have our first Chinese-American council member. I supported Michael Chang when he ran, worked on his campaign. I'm proud of his record. He is a fine councilman, representing all of us. I think we're at a point in Cupertino, we have qualified representatives coming in large numbers when we ask for appointments for our commissions now. We're continually, really sad that we can't appoint all of them, because we're getting such highly qualified people. And we can move to try and broaden the ethnic diversity of our commissions and committees, and we are doing that.
Thank you very much, Don. And John, down to you.
We are a very diverse community, and I think that's very evident to anybody that just walks around our streets. About five years ago, Laura Lee Sorenson and Nillafer Merchant put together the first, and a number of other people, put together the first diversity forum that I attended, and I looked out, and it was very much a homogeneous group. I attended then recently the new group that's been meeting over the last several months, and especially I met about a month ago, and that group was very diverse. And so we've come a long way in just a very few years. I think that the city plays an important role in getting us to work together with each other. I was part of the group that put together the new Leadership Cupertino program this year, and I think that's going to be a way of getting people, again, into the leadership of our community that will be very diverse. And again, I think the community is very important in doing things like the neighborhood garage sales, disaster preparedness programs, things that make us feel like neighbors and help break down the fear of the other.
Okay, that completes that question. And I don't have that many questions up here, so if anyone else has other questions, please feel free to get them up here. The next one reminds me just a little bit of when Calvin Coolidge was president. He had gone to church, and when he came home, his wife asked him, "What did the preacher talk about?" Well, he talked about sin. Well, what did he say about it? He was against it. Next question, "How do you feel about reasonably priced housing?" And I'd like to have you maybe augment your answer, not how do you feel about it, but do you have any suggestions as what might be done to resolve any problems associated with lack of reasonably priced housing? And we'll start with Don, coming in this way.
Yes, Jim, I think the only way to really effectively do that is something that's been mentioned earlier, which is to place tighter restrictions on the sizes of houses that are allowed to be built. Right now, we're at a point where of any of the smaller homes in Cupertino, it's economically feasible to buy them, smash them, and build a large house in their place. The smaller the house can be built in their place, the less the incentive is to do that. And I think that's, again, that's a very delicate situation, because it does affect people's property values, what their land is worth. But I think, I'm convinced that the rules we have right now are too liberal, and we need to work in that direction. We work with all the available sources for trying to foment affordable housing in our community. We've rehabilitated units. We've built units from scratch for affordable. I support continued efforts to try and do that as well.
Okay, thank you. And Donna, Andrea, I'm sorry.
10% of all the housing that gets built in Cupertino by law is affordable and sold to below-market-rate candidates, and that's an issue. Then, the rest of the housing is sold to people from $650,000 and up. So we have houses over here and houses over here. But we don't have any houses in the $400,000 range, for the most part, that people can afford to buy. So if we build some townhomes, people can buy those, and if we build small lots, subdivisions, they sell in that range. We had people waiting in line for the 24 that were built right by the city hall. So that's what I would like to see in our community.
Okay, Steve?
I've participated on the Housing Action Coalition. This is sponsored by the Santa Clara Valley Manufacturing Group. And one of the challenges that I had was specifically to address this question, and it was to try to come up with a single-family residence that takes into account new concepts in space planning, new types of materials. We had the best architects, the best space planners, best urban planners there. This coalition is still in place, and what really makes me proud of the fact is that the manufacturing group sees this as a problem that needs to be addressed head-on. When we talk about apartments, we talk about 1,000 units, we shouldn't be talking about numbers. We should be talking about qualitative aspects. If we look at the Forge over on Homestead, that is a reasonably nicely-designed, multifamily development. If we look at Portofino, it's like Rocky, okay? Rocky 1, Rocky 2, Rocky 3. It keeps changing hands, and we'll have to wait 50 years to tear it down and start over. So I don't think it's fair to frame this as high-density. It's really a qualitative issue, and the corporation's been helping.
Thank you, Steve. Sandy?
Yeah, you know, what is affordable housing in Cupertino? That's a tough one. Yes, 10% of the housing is affordable. I think it's a good partnership that we've developed with the developers, the city, and CCS, which manages the affordable housing, and that's certainly a model for everyone. I do believe that townhouses may be the way that we are really going to have any affordable housing in Cupertino, and that gets some people's hair up on the back of their neck, because that's higher density. And so those are some of the issues that you have to bring people together to come to consensus and figure out what works best for the city. We have very little buildable land left, but it's that buildable land. We are going to have to address these kinds of issues as to density, as to affordable housing, and also how to maintain the rights and dignity of the neighborhood and the people that own the property. I think people that come to council with those skills and experiences are the types of people we're going to need over the next few years.
Okay, thank you, Sandy. And John?
I'm categorically against sin and in favor of affordable housing. Worth Magazine recently rated Cupertino as 154th in the country in terms of the housing prices that we have here. And when you look at that, that's an amazing challenge for us as a community to develop affordable housing. That's 154th out of over 50,000 communities across the United States. So we're in the upper 1% of the entire world, entire world, really, when it comes down to it, and we need to look very seriously about how we can produce housing that's not just affordable. It's housing that's affordable for clerks in our community, it's affordable for teachers, it's affordable for sheriffs, it's affordable for people that we'd like to have live here, our sons and daughters, is what I've been hearing a lot of when I'm walking door to door. They're unable to move back to the community, and they may never. I live in affordable housing in town. I live in a townhouse, and it is a very nice place. I enjoy it a lot. And that kind of development across our community, I think, is something that we could look at when we're looking at allocating kind of precious land resources from this point forward. Another thing I'd like to see happen is a pool of money set up, so that we can help people move in for first-time down payments, and in turn, they repay back the pool, and we can in turn have a larger pool then for people to continue to do that on an ongoing basis.
Okay, thank you very much, John. This time, we're going to go another question. We're going to go back completely in the opposite direction, so we're going to start with you this time, John. This question is, "How can the council help revitalize VAALCO?"
I think I answered this one earlier, but I'll take another whack at it. We have a situation right now where Dillard's Department Store would like to come into VAALCO, Valley Fair, the people that Federated, which is the outfit that owns Macy's over at Valley Fair and up at Stanford, is blocking Dillard's from entering in this market, because they want to keep competition out. As a community, we need to work to kind of make sure the competition can happen to our advantage. And if we can in turn work with the State Attorney General's Office, and even do simple things, like we may all need to be called upon to go down and picket Macy's in a few weeks, so we can in turn raise some awareness about this issue. But we need to basically get Federated to free up that space, allow Dillard's to come in, and allow the mall to change hands in terms of ownership. Once we do that, we can re-tenant that mall, and 12 months from now, or 18 months from now, we can be sitting in a much different picture, looking forward to shopping there for Christmas, rather than going elsewhere.
Okay, Sandy?
I think that VAALCO is a serious problem for this community, and we do need to revitalize it. There's a couple of ideas. I'm not sure that that model of three anchor department stores works in today's world. I think maybe most people do not have the time to spend the day shopping. They hit it, and they're out, or they go for entertainment, and they shop while they're watching a movie, or where they're having dinner. And it may be that the whole concept there needs to be looked at. Also, that quote-unquote "Rose Bowl" area, that dirt lot there. I know that there was a hotel proposal years ago, a couple of years ago, that was turned down. I think that's probably a very good idea, and/or for us, for a store to come in there, and also to change the design of that center. It's something that we need to look at as a community. We have all the resources here to do that, and I think that John is right. We may all be down there picketing, or whatever we need to do, but we need to be very proactive. And there are a lot of possible solutions that look differently than what it looks like now.
Okay, thank you, Sandy. And Steve?
There's a book that was written called The Malling of America, and I'm going to use some of Jim's logic. Tear down Stanford, tear down Valley Fair, and then that just leaves VAALCO in which to shop. But honestly, you know, this has been a perennial issue. Only 10% of sales tax revenues generated at VAALCO over the years has come from Cupertino residents. So I think what we need to do is ask those 10%, why do they shop at VAALCO? And then we have to ask the other 90%. So we could use the Cupertino scene and say, "Why do you shop at VAALCO?", or "Why don't you?", or "What would you like to see?" There's also what we can dust off as an economic redevelopment plan, and now that we don't have to give monies to the county, we could take a look at that as a way to frame our research.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Andrea, your turn.
You know, the development of the town centered around VAALCO as being our major sales tax generator, and so other retail areas were not developed, and land wasn't dedicated for other retail areas. VAALCO's it, so we need to make it work. Having a quality store like Dillard's would be a benefit, but we can't just put Dillard's in there, because it's going to look the same, and people won't go there. We need to change the look of the center. That's what happened in the other major regional centers. We need a redevelopment and a reconfiguration there. So that's what I think we should do. We did a great job making it beautiful and hidden. Parking's hidden, the buildings are hidden, shoppers are hidden, and it fits beautifully into the community. And that was a focus of Cupertino. But people tend to be bandwagon people, and go where other people are, and we need to make the parking more visible, the stores more visible.
Okay, thank you, Andrea. And Don?
Yes, I think it's been covered awfully thoroughly by what's been said so far. The current council has initiated the action. Don Brown and the mayor actually traveled back to Chicago to talk to the owners or the operators of VAALCO earlier this year. And of course, the Economic Development Committee and the city staff have been very active in trying to make the center work by the most direct method possible, which is to get a good store into the Emporium location. I think that's our first-order business. Beyond that, I think there are things we can do to make VAALCO a little less mysterious to use. I think the issue of parking there is a very valid one. I think there's a lot of parking there. I think people have trouble finding it, and I think it's kind of an intimidating factor that maybe deters some people from going there. And I think a little intelligent, well-designed signage is probably a good approach to start with doing that. A simple thing, but one I think can help put that center back in real operation.
Okay, ready for another question here? Okay, now we're getting rather specific here, and the camera may want to pan across the city staff members as we get to this one. But the question is, "Why do we have to pay more for water when the city has $31 million in their pockets?" It's a good question, and Steve, we'll let you go first on this one. It just happened that you're in the middle this time. Why should we pay more for water when the city has $31 million in their pockets?
Is that why we don't have water up here? We can't afford it now? Jim, I'm glad you asked that question.
I didn't ask it. I read it.
Read that question. I come from the Cupertino Water Utility District, and what I have said is, "Show us the money," okay? But I don't mean just for that district, but for the city. We are healthy financially. I'd like to see some of those monies brought back into the neighborhoods, brought back into our commercial districts. We have the Montevista master plan, we have the Stevens Creek Boulevard master plan, we have this problem with VAALCO, we have neighborhoods that have been neglected. I think this is an opportunity to take those monies, not just for the senior center or for the library, but also for the Cupertino Senior Daycare Center. We are We are not proportional like the city of Sunnyvale. So I think it's a time where we can be able to reinvest into our community and our future.
Okay. Andrea, I'll let you go next, then Don, and we'll bring it back to this side.
Well, I don't have the water district figured out either because when we did the voluntary water reduction, 25%, we all stopped using the water, my bill went up. So obviously, the water company intends to make the same amount of money because of their infrastructure costs. So I think a lot of it isn't the actual water that we use or the cost of that water, but the need to maintain a public utility in town and how much we're willing to pay for that. And, you know, part of it's the utility tax. We have a good utility tax and maybe it's time to look at capping utility tax if it's able to pay for the things it was designed to pay for. So, you know, we just get into the enterprise of the water company and then I don't know enough about it.
Okay. Don?
The reason we have $30 million in reserves is that we leased the water company. That's how we got the final 10 million. And I voted for that because I felt very strongly that we need that amount of money in our reserves right now, both to accommodate the needs we have forthcoming for capital improvements and to have enough financial reserves so that the next time we get a depression or recession and a downturn, we don't have to drastically cut back city services as we did last time. It's a classic example of the situation I described earlier, where you do something that makes a lot of people very angry, but it really, I'm convinced, is the best thing for the city as a whole. The people that were formerly with the Cupertino Water District are now paying the same water rates I am. I don't think they're excessive. I don't think a serious financial hardship has worked on anyone. If there's someone who does make a case for hardship, we'll take care of that.
Okay. Thank you, Don. And Sandy, you're next, and then John.
You know, I think that's one of the difficult kinds of things that come between boards or councils. Because in order to make a decision that probably works for the whole city, and I do believe it had to do with maintaining a public utility and the increased costs of that and whether that made sense as a city to deal with that, there are some people that then got an increase of, I don't know, 30% in their water rates. Now, they were paying less all the years that the rest of the city was paying that additional amount. And so as you look at one side or the other, nobody's going to be happy. Perhaps it might have made sense to have some more gradual increase so that when those houses changed hands, it was a full 100%. In the meantime, maybe it was a more gradual percent getting up to 100%. I didn't know the intimate details of how that was negotiated. I do think ultimately, it was the right thing for the city to do, to get out of the water business and for us to equalize across the city what our, how we supplied water and who serviced that water. And certainly, the money it brought into the city is money we need to look at getting back to our citizens and services they need.
Okay. And John?
I'm still scratching my head a little on this one, to tell you the truth. I was at a coffee about three weeks ago, right after the time people that are now in a new water district received their first set of bills. And they were mad. There was no other way around it. That was a real hot issue around the table that night when we were sitting and talking about it. I will be the first to tell you, I'm not exactly sure with the rationale, why the city went to do this. I don't think we did a good enough job of explaining that to the community as a whole in terms of why the steps taken were taken at the time. But I think also what's done is done. And at this point, we have built up, we've allocated the money towards the reserves and I think it's important now we use that money for a good community purpose, that people that are paying more now feel like we actually got some value for what we're now having to pay in terms of higher rates. And again, two of the purposes I look for using that for was expansion of the senior center and also improvement of our library, and also perhaps things like linear parks along the railroads. So those are some of the areas I'd like to put on the board for us to start talking about. And I think that it's important for us as a community to start talking about how we use that reserve effectively.
Okay. And let's see, this next question, now we're going to start with Andrea and come down this direction here. All right. This one, talk about open space. When will we stop building? And it puts corner of Homestead and Deansa and Prunridge. So that's the question and you're free to answer it and interpret it the way that you can.
What was the corner?
Corner of Homestead and Deansa and Prunridge.
Okay. They don't intersect, of course. Looking for the corner of Homestead and De... Oh, the Homestead and Deansa intersects. And then Prunridge?
And it says Ann Prunridge. I presume that's the new apartment development on Prunridge and Wolf, I would imagine.
All right. The answer is, I'm all for open space. I like to have everything kept in open space, but people have the right to use their land. And so we have to balance property owners' rights with the city's needs and the residents' view. And for that, I think we need to pass some policies that put the buildings further back from the street, that screen them, that make them lower, and that reduce the mass. As far as open space, the diocese property, if that's developed, will dedicate some large open space areas. Every developer who builds has to provide money for our existing parks and onsite park-like improvements for the residents. So we are doing a good deal of that kind of work, even though it isn't readily noticeable when you drive down the street and the buildings are towering over you.
Okay. Okay. Thanks, Steve.
I think this is one of those unfair questions. I'm usually told to be quiet about open space, talk about the other issues. Because I've been personally involved with the diocese issue for eight long years and I think it's time to move forward. As Andrea indicated, that there's 2/3 of the property that will go to the county parks and recreation. As it relates to higher densities, we do have a formula, it's two acres, I believe, or three acres per 1,000. So it may be the question is, will there be open space for that area? And I'm not close enough to that issue, but by law or by the general plan, we need to provide them within close proximity, open space.
Sandy?
Open space is certainly important to me, but more importantly, it's important to everybody in the community. I hear about it wherever I go. It's part of what Cupertino is about when you look around you. I do believe that the last buildable land that we have available is going to become very seriously debated. And we need to, as the city council, make sure that we get as much open space as we can. Sometimes that may mean having more density in pieces like that tandem property that's on Tantown Stevens Creek in order to keep the green belt around us available and to give more open space in the hillsides. I think that the diocese, the agreement we came to on the diocese property where 2/3 of it went to open space is a good model for how we can come to those kind of consensus within our community with all of us working together. And I think that as Kaiser is here and as their lease continues to move along, that's going to be another issue that we will look at. And hopefully, maybe some of this money we're building in the city will ultimately be able to be used to purchase some more open land for us.
Okay. Thank you, Sandy. And John?
Bear with us, it's only a few more questions, gang. Mark Twain said a little while ago that you should buy land, they've stopped making it. Well, in Cupertino, it might be that you should preserve land, they've stopped, in order to stop building on it. And also, I think one of the things we need to look at is, what do you do with some of the few remaining parcels like along, that are non-traditionally thought of as open space? Things like the railroads where people are now running and walking? Why don't we go ahead and put a linear park along there so we can in turn all enjoy that a little more effectively along the lines of the Los Gatos Creek Trail? The developments at Wolf and Prunridge, well, actually, I want to talk first about the Homestead and Deansa. Those developments are way too close to the road. Anybody that drives down there feels it's really dense and very encroaches upon the cars, and I wouldn't personally like to live in that thing. But by the time we got over to Wolf and Prunridge, the city council did a little better. They pushed them back and it feels a little more livable when we go to develop on that land now when those are finally going to be built. When it comes down to hillsides, I think also you need to kind of start working on a regional basis with other cities in the West Valley here to make sure that our hillsides continue to be preserved as open space and also so ridge lines aren't crowded with houses and people in turn can look up and see greenery. And finally, I'd look at the diocese property and say, that was a pretty darn good compromise.
Okay. And last is Don.
Thank you. Really, three questions in one or four, maybe. Fortunately, John has covered pretty well, I think, a lot of the issues on the open space. We're actually working to do some of the things he's proposing. The trail along the railroad tracks is something the city is actively looking into. The diocese property, of course, be a wonderful open space addition. The apartments and that type of development, as part of what we did two weeks ago Monday, we decreased the height and increased the setback requirements for that type of development. So there has actually been action to do that. And I think as the council has progressed, the first units we dealt with were the most dense and they've become more attractive and more open as time has progressed. In one case, actually, the most dense-looking on the corner of Deansa and Homestead, the southeast corner, we actually had to change the general plan and reduce the density that was in there to build those that way, if you can believe it.
Thank you, Don. Okay. We don't have any more time for any more questions, but the question I would have asked, had we had time, is, why should we elect you to our city council? What we have time for is your closing statement. So this might be an entree into your closing statement. Each of you have one minute for closing. What I'm going to do is go back with Sandy first and go back that direction and let John be last. So Sandy, closing statement, one minute.
Okay. I'll leave it as an opening, why you should elect me for city council is because what you see is what you get. And I've worked for you for eight years. I am very out there and honest and open about how I feel. I don't have any hidden agenda. I don't have any one issue. I have been very proud of my record of representing this whole community. I feel very strongly that when you are elected to office, you don't sit there for yourself but for all the people that voted for you and those that did not vote for you. So my record is open, my experience is extensive. I bring private and public experience built in partnerships with legislature, business people, environmentalists, community members. And I've lived here all my life, since I was a teenager. So those are many reasons. You can read my literature to find out the rest of the reasons and I hope you vote for me on November 4th.
Thank you, Sandy. And Steve, you're next.
I'm going to take a historical perspective. I think Abraham Lincoln was asked, why should we vote for you, eight times before they finally decided. And the rest is history. I want to frame my comments around the most recent Mercury News editorial. I feel that they were fair, but they didn't say a couple of things. They did say I was strong in hillsides and open space protection. They said I had great credentials as it related to the neighborhoods. I guess they never got up onto my website to find out about the rest of me. And I want to thank Dean Skills for coming back because he had to bear with me earlier this morning than the optimist. But my feeling is that this is a community made up of individuals in relationship and that with us working together, thinking about the most important interest group, Cupertino, that there's not one issue that isn't also an opportunity.
Okay. Thank you very much, Steve. Okay. Andrea?
I'm a 20-year resident with many community activities over those 20 years, and I'm a balanced candidate, supporting the residents' view and the business view. I was endorsed by the Mercury News and then I was endorsed by right and left-wing organizations like the Tri-County Apartment Association and the West Valley Citizens Air Watch. They're very different from each other. And many other organizations on both sides of the line. And I think that that balance is what we need. I like the fact that we're a town of 40,000 people. I believe in the public process and I like the fact that people can come to a meeting and shape the decisions. And I'd like to keep the town that way.
Okay. Thank you, Andrea. And Don?
Well, I guess people will vote for me or against me, I hope primarily on what I've done in the four years I've been in office. I think I've played a key role in making the city safer, healthier, and more beautiful.